And make a red remarks and then I'll answer some questions thereafter. I generally do these media huddles, as I call them, are roundups. And I would get maybe two or three people here. And so obviously the moment is being met by current events. So I will read this my release and then I'll answer any questions that anybody may have. Charlotte must confront safety concerns head on. Public safety is our city's top priority and too many citizens in our community don't feel safe. As I have said many times, if you don't feel safe, then you're not. Far too many Charlotte residents share this concern. They don't feel safe in uptown, in their neighborhoods, in uptown parking garages, in our public spaces like parks, schools, and increasingly on our transit station and our lines. All of these spaces shape our quality of life as we go about our daily routines. The tragic murder on Charlotte Transit System underscores the urgency of the issue. Our community should never have to question whether getting on a train or waiting at a train station will put their safety at risk. The incident is a stark reminder that public safety must remain at the forefront of our city's priorities. Yesterday, I rode the light rail myself and toured one of our busiest transit stations. I spoke directly with riders, listened to their concerns, and saw firsthand what so many of them are experiencing each and every day. Their message was clear. They want to feel safe. They want to see more visible CMPD officers, not just occasionally, but consistently, on trains, on the buses, at the stations, on the platforms, and throughout the transit system. As community leaders, we have an obligation to address these concerns, both the perception of crime and the reality of it. Simply, there's no choice but to meet this moment with clearly a purpose by increasing by addressing root causes, admitting our shortcomings where they exist, and listening to community voices and acting swiftly to regain public confidence. We must block out the outside noise and focus on the urgent work in front of us. It would be a mistake to focus only on transit safety, though it isn't important. Instead, we must take a holistic approach that strengthens safety throughout the entire city, in uptown, in our corridors of opportunities, in our neighborhoods, parks, schools, and beyond. Residents deserve to feel secure where they live, work, learn, or play. Public safety is not only about law enforcement, it's also about prevention and intervention and compassion. But law enforcement also requires focus and accountability. And that means in our community, we need less guns and more cops. We need to expand the visibility of CMPD in our trains and our stations. We must implement targeted enhanced enforcement in hotspot areas such as Catherine Simmons off of Beatty Fort Road. We must hold businesses accountable when they allow illegal drug activity on their properties. We must crack down on absentee property owners who leave their properties unattended, creating environments where drugs are sold and neighborhoods offered. We must continue to support alternative to violence programs that work with those at most risk. We must strengthen gang prevention initiatives and investing in youth programs that provide young people with mentorship, opportunities, and safe pathways. We desperately need to build a 300-bed residential facility for the unhoused that includes wraparound service and mental health, workforce development, and addiction treatment, because addressing homelessness is a public safety strategy as well and a moral obligation. We must improve lighting throughout the city, cameras designed in our parking garages and public space to reduce vulnerability. Also, we must continue to invest in our corridors of opportunities because economic growth and community investments are crime prevention strategies as well. We must also confront the real and pressing issues of mental health and substance abuse. These challenges fuel many of the safety concerns our residents are experiencing. Charlotte cannot address this problem alone. We must work closely with our major healthcare providers and with the Mecklenburg County Health Department to expand access to treatment, counseling, crisis intervention. This is not only a public health issue, but also one of the most urgent public safety issues our community is facing. Finally, we cannot do this without strong support from the state of North Carolina. Our district attorney's office is underfunded and understaffed. We need more prosecutors, more major court sessions, more resource for information technology to process the rising caseloads. Without that support, too many criminals slip through the system and erode any public trust and safety. As chairman of the city's jobs and economic development committee, I also know that public safety is tied directly to our city's ability to recruit and retain major employers. Companies looking for cities where their employees feel safe, working in community environments are secure. Safety concerns undermine our competitive edge if they go unaddressed. At the same time, we must continue to tackle affordability by working through aggressive workforce development programs with all our major employees. By expanding job training, apprenticeship opportunities, and pathways into high-demand careers, we can ensure Charlotte teams are prepared for tomorrow's economy while keeping our city livable for working families. Let me be clear. We also must close the revolving door for repeat offenders. Too many of the crimes that disrupt our neighborhoods and transit system are committed by individuals who cycle through the system over and over and over again. This cannot continue. A county must be certain, swift, and fair. Our residents deserve nothing less. Charlotte is a growing vibrant city and our success depends on residents feeling safe in their daily lives. That requires honesty, transparency, and more importantly, action. By combining stronger targeted law enforcement with robust community support programs, addressing mental health and substance abuse, demanding the resources we need from the state, investing in workforce development opportunities, and closing the door for repeat offenders, we can restore public confidence and create a city where safety is not an aspiration, but a reality for every neighborhood. I've been serving this community for over 25 years. Ten years as a state senator, ten years as a council member, a congressional candidate. This is a moment in time for our community. Our community is a great community, above Charlotte, above the people, above our vibe, our attitude. But it's okay to admit that we've got some warts as well. And one is making sure that the most basic principle foundation of a community is the ability to feel safe. And I'm committed to that. I'm committed to working with any federal partners that wants to be involved with what we're doing here locally. I'm open to any investigations that the feds may do or the state want to do. I'm certain that we will pass the test and meet the bar. And if there's some things that we aren't doing that we should do better, I'm committed to doing that as well. I am going to block out all the noise and focus on things I can control. Can't control what's coming out of DC and I won't. Can't control what's coming out of Raleigh and I won't. But I can control what the Charlotte City Council does. I can control what my actions are, and that's me showing up, taking accountability, working for community consensus, listening to the residents, and try to solve problems as they occur. That's my obligation, that's my responsibility. I have consistently done that, sometimes very successful and sometimes we fall down, but we get back up. We have a moment in time that we have to meet, and this city has always done that. We've always met the moment. I think we can do it today as well. Thank you.
Malcolm, in terms of city leaders, you're only the second one to speak in 19 days. Edmund Peacock did it a week later. Mayor Val Lous has gone into hiding. Nothing from Johnny Jennings, nothing from Spencer Merriweather. Why are you now speaking?
The DA has been speaking for the last three, four, five years about the ability of getting more resources from the state of North Carolina to hire more DAs, to get better training for our magistrate. You can be a magistrate and don't have a law degree. That's insane, right? So he's been speaking out for years. Some of these problems aren't new, right? I only can speak for Malcolm Graham, and I'm very transparent. I wear my emotions on my shoulders. You guys know what I'm thinking and what I'm feeling. And I think that it is time for elected officials, present company included, to speak truth to power, to tell people when they're right, to tell them when they're wrong, and to find the moral middle ground. All of Charlotte, from my perspective, the majority of Charlotte is in the middle. They want moderation. They don't want extremes, right? There is a moderate middle that we can find to solve community problems and bring everybody with us. And so why others aren't talking, you have to ask them that question. I continue to provide the leadership for the city. I continue to be open, honest, and accessible. And I continue to want to be a part of making our community better tomorrow than it is today.
Malcolm, it's symbolic that you're standing here when you're delivering these remarks. We haven't seen a lot of people standing here. What will you say to your colleagues? Or what have you said to your colleagues about being visible in the place that is obviously one of the central concerns?
Well, I was here yesterday as well, and I parked my car at Johnson C. Smith University. I jumped on the streetcar. I came over here. I walked the facilities. I talked to the users of the system. I inspect the system. This building has outlived its useful existence. It needs to go down, right? We need to do something different and create a better environment. I've talked to riders. They want to see more CMPD officers on the platforms, in the stations, on the buses. They want to make sure that we highlight not crime that's happening here in transit. As unfortunate as it was, right, that they want us to tackle crime throughout the city. I have been a, and you've been at some of these meetings, council meetings, actively saying that we need to be a lot more assertive, not aggressive, but assertive in identifying hotspots and curing crime. So I think, you know, again, that's a question for them. I only can speak for my action as a member of the council who understands that what we do or what we don't do impacts a major responsibility that I have, which is jobs and economic opportunities, chairing that committee to ensure that the citizens know that we're listening, that we're watching, that we're feeling and touching the product. And that's what I've done yesterday. That's what I'm doing today, and I will continue to do it. As you know, I do these huddles all the time, so I'm very accessible. This is my largest audience, so hopefully we can talk a little tennis as well. There's other things going on in our community other than this. This is really important, right, for sure. But I think folks just need to get out of the building and manage by walking around.
Malcolm, what effect do you think this is going to have on the transit referendum in November? Are you concerned about it and are you still prepared?
Well, you know, the election was yesterday, and in case you guys noticed, I won again with no opposition. And so now the campaign for the general election starts today. And a major item on the general election is probably the race in District Six, as well as the transit referendum. I don't want to mix what happened to this young lady with politics, right? I think we need to solve the public safety issue with transit and the city as a whole. And then the election will have, the voters will have their say about how we move forward with transit. And I think they're two separate issues. Obviously, they combine at some point. But I think the election needs to stand on its own merit. I'm focusing on ensuring that people in this city feel safe.
Are you against it or not after this?
I'm a yes, but, right? I would love to see a non-displacement initiative. There are a lot of businesses along West Boulevard or Central Avenue that will be closed because of the construction of hypothetically the, the streetcar. They have to pay their lease, their rent, their mortgages on their businesses. Their employees won't be able to work during construction. So I think we need to be sensitive to that for sure. I think we need to make sure that the authority has representation of all the members of our community who want to serve. We have, if you ride a bus every day or you ride the train every day, I think you can buy value to the authority by your lived experience. They should be allowed, and I will support appointing everyday riders to the authority if it comes to that. And lastly, we need to make sure that everyone prospers through small business development to help build a line, not only construction-related services, but professional services as well.
But you mentioned but. What's the but about?
I just mentioned the three buts. But we have to do those three things.
Councilman, you've come up with a lot of ideas.
Fourth for that, right? That's something that we're going to have to figure out how we can pay for. That's something I will be advocating for with my colleagues. One council member can't do anything by themselves. And so I will be reaching out to the mayor, the city manager, and my colleagues about what we can do to provide a rapid response to some of the things that are occurring throughout the city. Because many of the initiatives that I just mentioned, we're currently doing already, we just need to change the gas in it from regular to premium and spotlight it so that the community will know. It'll be a combination of both, right? Because some, like getting additional police officers to have a task force that's specifically related to transit. It's a budgetary item that's not in CMPD's budget or our budget. I'm willing to fund that. We have a meeting on the 22nd, I think, where we talk about a memorandum of understanding with the private security firm. I want to read that very, very clearly because I believe CMPD should be in the driver's seat of any public safety initiative related to transit so that we want to have this dual thing about who's on first, who's on second, or whose jurisdiction it is. We have a budget debate every year, and I'm pretty sure that will be a part of the budget debate, not only as relates to public safety, but relates to how we do a wide variety of city initiatives. That question is to be answered.
Malcolm, the transportation secretary has basically said, "Why would we give billions of dollars to Charlotte or any city for expansion when they can't protect what they have? How would you protect the other going all the way up to Davidson, Cornelius if you can't protect what you have?"
Well, again, I'm going to work with our federal partners, whether it's US DOT, whether it's the state attorney's office, to listen and learn in reference to what their perspectives are. They may have some ideas that we don't. I don't know. But hopefully, we will continue to provide the oversight necessary for public safety on all our lines. Again, no one understands the sudden loss of life of a loved one. An unexpected loss of life. I talked to my sister on a Monday, and that Wednesday she was gunned down in a church. Right? So I, my heart goes out to the victim's family, her friends, her loved ones. And we should address this issue forthright. But I think my goal is to have a broader perspective about our city. Our city is a great city. Crime, no one cares about the crime data right now because if you don't feel safe, you're not safe, right? And so how can we work collectively with all our partners, our healthcare institutions on mental health, our county partners with the health department, our nonprofit organizations, our grassroots organizations on youth, right? How collectively can we all work together to impact the perception of crime in our community, but also the reality? Because two days ago, a young man, two individuals were killed in Charlotte, and nobody mentioned anything about it. So it's all of us. And so I'll let the federal government and the state government do what they have to do. I can't control that. I'm going to focus on things that I can control locally on behalf of the citizens of Charlotte.
I guess as a city leader, can you explain, and it's the big question, why wasn't there, why isn't there people checking tickets? Why isn't there security on the light rails that's been up way for years with the under system? Why has it been that way?
Well, the system was designed that way from the get-go, right? It's an open-air system, right? And it's, and you were at the meeting, right? You heard the explanation. It doesn't change. And so I think, again, I'm not going to play Monday quarterback and think why those decisions were made six, seven, eight, 10 years ago. I can control how we move forward, right? And that's why I will continue to do it.
Malcolm, one thing, we've seen this receive national attention, and we've also noticed our trust spoken about this. And he's also talked about bringing National Guard to places like Los Angeles to tackle safety concerns. Do you think we're at a point where the National Guard needs to be brought to Charlotte to tackle safety concerns?
Again, I'm going to focus on things that I can control. I can't control what happens and what's coming out of DC. I can't control what's coming out of Raleigh. I can control, as one council member, the actions that we can take in reference to ensuring that our neighborhoods are safe, that our corridors are safe, that our businesses are safe, that we create a safer environment for tourism and travel in our community. And then I'll let the other guys do what they got to do. I'm just not, I'm just not going to go there.
And what can you as local leaders do to, to address concerns or support people that might be dealing with mental health challenges but also repeat offenders? How do you balance that and overcome those challenges?
Well, we continue to work with our partners. Again, public safety is a team sport, you know? It's the city, it's the county, it's the state, it's our nonprofit organizations. Again, this type of collaboration is not new. We've been doing this before and we will continue to do it. We just need to, again, be a lot more visible in what we're doing and why we're doing it. Like, for example, I serve on an uptown safety task force. I've been serving on that task force for months. I'm working on an initiative with Friendship CDC to tackle crime along Catherine Simmons. I've been working on it for months. I'm just supporting alternative violence program, walking the street with some of those guys that patrol some of our corridors of opportunity. So a lot of work is already being done, right? And so I think we need to meet the moment, right? Someone was tragically killed, but then I think we need to be, we need to block out the noise and focus on the work. And that's, and the work for me is local. The work for me is things that I can control within my sphere of influence, and I will continue to do that.
Have you or anyone else in the city council had any communication with the victim or the perpetrator?
I have not. I can't speak for others. Who's ultimately responsible? All of us. Because even, even our citizens, if you see something, say something, right? So this is a responsibility on us as citizens. Obviously, the city, the county, we all are in this together. Ultimately, as of right now, the system is under the direction of the city of Charlotte. I'm still quietly working, not quietly now, right, with the city attorney's office about some initiatives that I'm very concerned about along the Beatty Fort Road corridor in terms of absentee landlords, loitering, open-air drug sales, et cetera. Business owners that are loud, drug use on their property. And so I'm working with the city attorney's office. I think we ought to, within the next week or two, talk about how to be moving forward, patrol the catch system. Again, I want CMPD officers doing that type of work within the way. And there's some other things I want to talk with my colleagues about. One council member can't do anything by themselves, right? And so I want to collaborate with others to see if we can have a, really a proactive response.
Malcolm, you're talking a lot about local response and focusing on that. I'm wondering whether you see any role for the business community in this? I mean, it's inherently a government issue of security, but is there any aspect that government?
Yeah, 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 you know, I think we've already seen the model, right? The model is when we were trying to go after the transit tax, everyone leaned in. The city, the county, the business community. We all need to lean in going through Raleigh, asking for additional support for the DA's office, right? If you want to stop repeat offenders, they need the resources to process the cases. I've been a state senator for 10 years, and we've been asking for years and years and years for additional resources so that we can meet the moment here locally. So I think the corporate community definitely needs to work with us there. Our healthcare institutions, Novartis and Atrium on the healthcare side of mental illness and substance abuse. So I think, again, a team report is necessary. But what people don't want is more meetings. They don't want any more meetings. We have to meet and then measure what we decide that we're going to do and then put it in action. So if I could pivot right quickly since I got all this attention? There's a tennis tournament this weekend. It's called the Charlotte Amateur Tennis Championship. I host it every year. We've got over 350 players playing to support the Center Grand Purge Foundation. As you know, we've been trying to bring big-time tennis to Charlotte. The Invitational, the Charlotte Invitational, again, is this year in December with Venus Williams and Madison Keys and T. Eiffel and Thelo Fritz. And so we continue to work on tennis in this community. And if you're free and available, I would love for you guys to come out and see what we're doing with the tournament. We're having a workshop clinic for about 70 kids from the Greater Richmond Program, giving them tennis lessons. And that's part of this public safety thing too. We got to keep our kids occupied and focused and activities so they won't have out of minds. And so I had a whole lot to do, but I think you guys probably got what you wanted. Any additional questions?
Going back to what you were saying earlier about safety, are there any sort of short-term or very, what can people expect to be changed in the next few, coming weeks, coming months, like short-term?
Well, I think you've already seen it already, right? There's a more intentional police presence here at the stations, on the platforms, as well as on the buses and trains. An escalation within the next two weeks that we'll have a conversation with council about a memorandum of understanding between CMPD and private policing. I think you'll see that. And I think you'll see, again, the Public Safety Committee continue to do the work that they've already started in terms of youth prevention and crime. So again, my goal is to recognize what happened, but also recognize that we have to make sure that the entire city itself is safe and secure.
Is there any concern about over policing in that area?
No. I think we need less guns, more cops, and more resources for mental illness and the DA's office.
Malcolm, could any of the money, if the tax passes, could any of that money be used for transit-related security?
I don't know specifically. I would say yes. I would say yes, though, right? I mean, if it's part of establishing a new system, it's protecting the system. So I would think that they should, but you might want to practice that. I'm not sure.
Is that something you would want?
Yeah, of course. They've got billions of dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.